The following is a rebroadcast of the Newark City Schools Board of Education's most recent general monthly meeting.
I'd like to welcome everyone and call to order this meeting of the Newark City School District Board of Education. We're meeting on August 13th, 2012, at McGuffey Elementary School at 5:30 PM. Mr. Anderson, call the roll please.
Mr. Blind?
Here.
Mr. Bybee?
Here.
Mr. Carr is absent. Mr. Harden?
Here.
Mrs. Nickam?
Here.
We have a quorum of four.
Thank you. Mr. Bybee will be on, lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Could we stand and face the flag over here to my left and your right? Yeah, we had a pretty extraordinary couple of weeks here with the Olympics and with the United States taking as many gold and as many victories as they did. And it just kind of shows you what can happen through the spirit of teamwork and consistency and passion and commitment. And, you know, when I say those things, I think about what we've been through in school district over the last couple of years, but more importantly, over this last year. And as we are about to embark upon a brand-new school year, I think we should think about the possibilities, the great possibilities that we have in this school district to continue this positive momentum that we have going on. So I hope that you will join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan. Now we'll have a construction update. Possibly. I guess you're up. I guess Dennis is up.
It's all Andy ever does, is small and any.
I know JBA has been working together with the contractors to finish up the punch list for this building. I did my walkthrough this week and did my final furniture punch. Everything looks very, very nice. I'm very excited about showing people around this facility. It's very exciting. In regards to the high school, I know things have been very busy there as well. Furniture has been delivered in A, B, D, and F. And so I'll be going through, I believe I was asked to go through next week to do all of that final furniture punch. And as far as the construction update, I'm not on-site as much, so I can't really give an update to that. But I can at least get something down for Andy if something comes up.
Any questions for Dennis?
Oh, and also, the playground for this facility should be starting next week.
Great, thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
And now we'll take communication from the floor. Anyone wishing to address the board can approach this microphone. Please give your name and address, and you can speak for up to five minutes. Does anyone wish to address the board?
Yeah, my name is Wyatt McLean. I live at 627 Granville Road. Do I need to give any more information? Okay. My wife's nurse at Children's Hospital, and I'm a heavy machinery operator and am gone many mornings at four. I'm the father of three children under six. My first child is looking forward to starting kindergarten at Johnny Clem in a few days. Since last February, my family has been trying to ensure a safe way for my five-year-old to get to school. My wife inquired at the school, then, and we were told we live within one mile radius of the school. My mother-in-law called the superintendent's office last spring, and it was suggested we could contact Mr. Nickam, which we did via email. Again, we were told that we lived within a mile radius. In the kindergarten registration, we filled out a bus request, and we have heard nothing. I called the bus supervisor, and after several attempts, was told that they had no record of my child, and I could not use the bus. I was told I should talk to the superintendent's office. I asked for an appointment with him and was given none. The office gave me another person's number. It was, um, sorry. And I've called him and left several messages. We have been asking that the process is in place to ask for an exception to this rule. This is the first year this problem, oh, sorry. Although it is about seven tenths of a mile from school, our child would have to walk a short way on Granville Road with no sidewalks and then cross five lanes of traffic on North 21st Street, and then additional three lanes on Granville Street, a said-walk and road that is now closed. We should then have to walk up 21st Street and cross several additional dangerous intersections. I'm sure many of you as drivers have experienced frustration and near mishaps at this most dangerous intersection. Please imagine how dangerous it is even for an adult, let alone children, to maneuver with cars turning right on red and everyone speeding through on yellow and red lights. I have another article from the newspaper here where it gives statistics that the 21st Street-Granville Road intersection, on it being one of the busiest and most dangerous intersections in the city. Several fatalities have occurred in this stretch of road this year. The day my mother-in-law was on the phone with the superintendent's office, there was a crash outside on the road. It is not safe for anyone to cross here, and no elementary children should be expected to do so, especially without a crossing guard. I have a newspaper article from February 14th where the, when announcing a new school bus stop at the other end of 21st Street, Mr. Ute was quoted as saying, "We don't want kids to cross 21st Street." I'm not quite sure why we can produce new bus stops at one end of 21st Street near Ollies mid-year when my child cannot get on a established route on a bus that goes right past our house. I am asking you as the board of members to please help me solve this issue by making safety your first priority for my child and any further future children in this short three tenths of a mile stretch on Granville Road.
Anyone else wish to address the board this evening? There's no further public comment, we'll move on to treasurer's recommendations.
Item 2A, treasurer's recommendation, approval of board meeting minutes for July 11th, 2012 regular meeting. Item 2B, approval of July 2012 financial statements and payment to vendors, which was reviewed with the finance committee last Friday. Item 2C is approval of 2013 temporary supplemental appropriation resolution. This supplemental appropriation is for $200,000 because one of our middle schools became qualified for the 21st Century Grant for $200,000. Item 2D is approval to pay all the invoices, also approved by the finance committee. And item 2E is the city TIFs, which is in one of your addendums. The balances we have as of July 31st is general fund 21-7, bond retirement 4.2 million, permanent improvement 2.9 million, building fund 2.4 million, food service 700,000, high school facilities project local 2.2 million, OSFC project state share 7.5 million, classroom facilities 1.9 million, and other miscellaneous 3.7 million, for a total of 44.3 million, which agrees with the bank. I would ask for your approval of this report.
We have a motion to approve treasurer's recommendations 2, A through D, and E from the addendum.
So moved. Second.
Third is moved. Thomas, second. Any questions or discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes, motion carries. Superintendent's recommendation.
Okay, under item 3A, personnel, just want to note the addendum for Jeff Smith, the assistant high school boy soccer coach, also two staff members we wish well who recently resigned to Mano Corona and Abby Gall, left for other opportunities to which their replacements are on here. And I would share with you, we hate to see those two ladies go, but we have two wonderful replacements already in place and have been on-site since last week, so we appreciate that. Under item 3, appointments and assignments, Ashley Martindale is at 35-752. That needs, make sure you have 41-656. Wasn't sure if you got that sent out or not, which is the second person under certified. Change to that.
What is it?
41-656. And you can cross out the 35.
Got it.
Also under here, I would note, I don't know if she's out in the audience or not, Gemma Zimmerman, she might be back in the back part, coordinator of special programs. Gemma's on there as a, we kind of transform the ASC. Under item 4, supplemental contracts, that should pretty much take care of the fall. Supplementals. Item 5 are salary adjustments to people who are already here, Jessica Corum, Martha Harmon, Linda Price, obviously part of the adjustment from the pickup from the board. Under item 7, cross out the word "none," there should be an addendum. I want to make sure you have the addendum on that. It's DM Caldwell as a substitute, Martha Rucker, and Ryan Walker. And under item 8, the approval agreement with the school resource officer, which is provided from the Newark City Police Department for 40,000.
We have a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation, A, personnel 1 through 8, including the addendum items.
So moved.
Dan is moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Curtis, second. Any questions or discussion?
I just think it is important to note that the coordinator of special programs, there has been some reorganization down there, and that is not additional expense if that is at least neutral, if not a little bit of a savings from what we've had in the past.
Good point, Tom. Any further discussion? If not, call the roll, please, Jeff.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes, motion carries.
Under item B, all the way down under 6A, BMI screening waiver resolution, we've done that every year in the district. I think, Mindy, I know you're sitting out there, this might be the last year where you have to get a waiver because that's going away. It's going to become optional, so this is the last year for the waiver. And I would note that just because we waived the resolution to test for body mass index for our students does not mean that we're not doing anything from a healthy standpoint in the district. And we're doing many things in our phys ed department and other areas. Item 6D, revised school calendar, those days are the same for staff. We just had a, we applied for a waiver for four professional days for the staff, and they're non-student days. And so Seth will be making sure we get that out to the students on which days they are. I know the first one's August 31st, but my memory's not good enough to send, I don't have the rest of the other three dates. They are working days for our staff, and I would share when we're talking about professional development, one of the biggest reasons I think our student achievement has improved is because of our professional development that our teachers are receiving. And so we appreciate the board and the staff and the state allowing us to do so. And Mindy, I appreciate your work, Mindy and Maura, planning that, so thank you very much. Also, under E, Newark High School limited bus service, this is to carry on what we started last February with cluster stops for the high school. So, which we found, and Maura has the reports, if you want to see them, they are reports of, a list of students and how well they improved from a student attendance standpoint from semester one to semester two when we instituted the busing. And grades we have, but obviously we won't release those with student names, but if you want to see them at the time, we can white out the names and put student X or student A, student B. Gifts, monetary gift from Newark Rotary of $1,000, and that gift to the Development and Disabilities Program, which I believe Gene, you used as part of the end-of-the-year picnic, is that what you used that for, at the Rotary Park? So it's a well-attended, wonderful thing for our kids, so we appreciate the Rotary's gift from.
We have a motion to approve superintendent's recommendations, B, students in curriculum, and C, gifts.
So moved.
Second.
Curtis moved, Dan is second. Any questions or discussion?
I have a question on D, 6D. Are those additional days, or are they, I didn't hear that part of the explanation?
No, our school calendar's 183 days. Students sent 178, I believe. Basically what we did is apply to the state for a professional development waiver. The reason that's, we're doing this now in August is because we got denied on our initial application. So we went back for an explanation of why. They shared with us they wanted a little bit more detail, which, I don't know how much more detail they wanted, we did, but when you give it to ODE, they have 45 days to respond. And so we did make an appeal to them, and I appreciate they made a decision fairly soon.
But it's no, we're not having fewer days of class, it's the same.
No, we have four less days in staff with students.
Okay.
Or in class, not in staff.
So how many total days of?
That'll make 174.
174.
174 days instead of 178. But it is a staff day that they will be here for development.
I had a question on the same one. Looking at the bylaws that we've gotten in the agenda, it says instructional purpose days, no fewer than 182, days in session 174, we've got the four waiver days, what are the other four days in there that, what makes up?
Well, they're already.
But it would be the two days. The difference between the student days and the teacher days, is that what you're asking?
Well, the difference between the 182 instructional days that we list and the student days plus the waivers.
Well, there's only 178 where students are actually in session, and then there's four teacher days that are the two days before school starts. There's a day in November that we have, Election Day, that we have Professional Development Day, and, Maura, what day am I forgetting?
Last day.
So basically, you're saying that?
So they had four days of professional development, we've added four more days.
So along with these waiver days, the professional development days count?
So eight total.
According to what the bylaws call instructional days.
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to understand that.
Any further discussion? Not called the roll, please, Jeff.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes, motion carries. Now, adoption of board policies. It is recommended that the Board of Education adopt these policies as shown in the appendix and as announced at the July 11th, 2012 meeting of the Board of Education from the SALT Committee, File 5530.01, Newark City School District Drug and Alcohol Policy for Students and Athletes. File 8210, School Calendar. File 8330, Student Records. File 8530, Sale of Food. File 8550, Competitive Food Sales. File 9160, Public Attendance at School Events. We have a motion to adopt these policies.
So moved.
Dan is moved, do I have a second?
Second.
And Thomas, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes, motion carries. Now we'll start with board discussion. Devin, you can start.
Actually, I got a few things I wanted to mention. We had a graduation rate, a graduation committee meeting the other day, and I think people should realize the people that we have, the resources that are being earmarked toward our students, I think we had, what, 30 people, 35 people at that meeting? And just the community involvement is unbelievable. And anybody that's out there, as Tim always says, are millions of viewers that are thinking about, you know, maybe volunteering, we can always use a few more. But it's just amazing the participation we have. Fall sports are starting, you know, everybody get out and support the teams. Also, with school starting, a lot of traffic, or a lot of students on the roads, you know, ask people to be careful. Along those lines, I appreciate Mr. McLean's presentation, the way you went about it. A lot of people wouldn't have had that approach if somebody could get with him and discuss it, and be it even if it's the name of a neighbor who is bringing their kids or an extra bus stop, you know, let's at least have the discussion. And also something that came out in the graduation meeting, we have a student that I think what we're hearing, excuse me, hearing quite a bit more about this, a Devon Wagers at the high school who won a State Farm National 26-Second Program T-shirt Design Contest. And when you think of that as a national contest through State Farm, that's quite an honor for him. You know, I understand that it's going to be on statefarm.com and on the 26-Second Facebook page, but I just wanted to bring that up and congratulate Devon.
That'll pass.
I just wanted to mention, you know, this time of year is especially exciting. There's a lot of excitement in the air because school's getting ready to start. As you said, the sports programs, they're practicing. But I guess to me, makes this even more exciting are the facilities that we have. With the high school very nearly completed and with McGuffey completed now, if you look around our district and all these buildings that have been renovated and all the new construction and all the facilities that are just top-rate, that will easily compare with any community across the state, and for that matter, probably across the country. There's so much thanks and so much gratitude that we have for all the hard work that's gone into getting these facilities ready and for our students to be able to take advantage of these. Now, admittedly, these are just buildings. And of course, the true test comes when our students come in and they feel engaged to learn, and they feel like they're an important part of what goes on to educate themselves through the city school district. I'm looking forward to that. I think it's going to be an exciting time for us. You know, we've seen positive changes, and we're going to continue to see them change and improve. Graduation rate, we've seen some momentum with that. It's just a great time to be in Newark City School. I heard Doug Ute say this all the time, "It's great to be a Wildcat." And Doug, there's probably never been a better time than to be a Wildcat.
I want to thank the Newark Rotary for their contributions. I've said it before, these organizations and these companies, they can do a lot of things with their money. And to think that they think of enough of us to be able to contribute some funds to us, we're indeed grateful and thankful. So I'm looking forward for the school to start and for there to be new beginnings. Thank you, Beth.
I'm just thankful to be a part of this team, thankful to be a part of this community, proud of the buildings we have, and I know the students will take care of it, the staff. It was wonderful, I got here a little bit early just to walk down the hall and talk to a couple, three of the staff members. You could tell they were excited about the starting of the year and this fantastic building. I got kind of a chuckle because the one young lady, she said, "Sure am thankful for air conditioning." And I think everybody in the community probably can relate to that after the power outage, and everybody was out of air conditioning for about seven days. So thank you, board, for allowing me to be the treasurer for this organization, and I'm proud to be a Wildcat also.
As Dan mentioned, school will be starting soon, so I always like to say, kids get excited. Sometimes they keep going a little bit too fast and don't think about crossing streets and things like that, so I ask our community to be a little extra cautious here in the next few weeks, and our kids will be out and about, headed to school, and so please be aware of that. As you can tell, we're very excited for the start of the school year for a lot of reasons. We've got a lot of reasons to be thankful. I just spent some time over at the high school, and I come over here, two buildings that were getting ready to open. I would like to thank Martha and her staff, and you'll see when their test scores come out, that they were asked three years ago to do what they had to do to get this building ready and moving down the street and to a new environment. And I can tell you, they're going to be smiling next week because they just come out of a building, it's about 120 degrees a lot of days in August and September, and the student achievement's been wonderful down there and the atmosphere. Anytime I ever stepped in there, our staff was very positive, and even on those really hot days. So we appreciate the McGuffey staff and the fine McGuffey citizens that go to school there, and I know they're going to be really excited to come in their new building. This is just awesome in here. Attitude and environment are everything for us in the Newark City Schools, and so we appreciate the community's support of our buildings and allowing our students to have modern facilities and those type of things. So thank you for that. Also, I'm going to mention, Jeff mentioned a power outage, and I would tell you, I was very happy that the Newark City Schools could lend a hand over at Cherry Valley and that staff over there, and Chet and the maintenance people over there, Dave and Larry and the whole group of people in Newark that opened that building up so our community could use that. These are community facilities, so at a time in need like that. And I have a letter from State Farm, or State Farm. Why did I say State Farm? The Red Cross. I got two State Farm people beside me here, I guess we're always giving State Farm a plug, but "For your generous support of the American Red Cross of Licking County during the July 2012 Ohio Windstorm, together we're able to offer comfort and needs for those going without." And when you can offer a shower in an elementary building and things like that, you know, we were really tickled. I know the ASC, some of us worked up there on Monday and Tuesday of that week because we were without power downtown. And to see the people coming in and how much in need they were, I was really happy that we could offer one of our buildings and do what we could for those in need, so thank you.
I'm excited for the new school year. It's going to be a great year, and I know it's going to be a great year because we have a great staff and we have great leaders and great teachers and great students. But in addition to that, we have a great community that supports us, from the community that passed the bond issue that brings us this beautiful building we're in tonight, to the 30-plus community members that were at the latest graduation rate committee, to the community members that read to our students and to our students under our schools, and to the different organizations that are collecting school supplies for our kids that can afford school supplies. And so I'm very excited, it's going to be a fantastic year. And now I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of conference with the board's attorney to discuss matters which are the subject of pending or imminent court action, and we do not intend to take action following that meeting.
So moved.
Second.
First is moved, Thomas, second. Any discussion? Not called the roll, please, Jeff.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Bybee?
Yes.
Mrs. Nickam?
Yes, we'll adjourn to executive session at, it looks like about 5:57.
Thank you. Welcome to McGuffey Elementary School. And if you would, please join me in welcoming our members of our high school ROTC program as they present the flag and a pledge of allegiance.
March. Left, 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 right, left. Left, 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 right, left. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. March. Well, we thank the members of the ROTC program at the high school, wonderful program that about 300 students are taking a part of at the high school right now, so we appreciate those students being involved in this program tonight. My name's Doug Ute, I'm the superintendent of schools here in Newark, and I want to begin tonight by thanking our community for the building that we're standing in, and really, all of our buildings throughout the city. The high school is nearly complete. I was up there before, I came over here, and a big portion of that high school was done this. portion of that high school was done this summer, and it's like this building. There are a few things, like if you go to the bathroom across the hall, I looked for, not toilet paper, I guess I didn't, I didn't need that, however, I looked for paper to dry my hands or somewhere, so I see our architects and some over there, we need to get some paper towels in there somewhere if we could, but little things like that, but that's okay. We'll go through some of that, but as you go around, I think you're really going to be impressed at this building, it's a beautiful building, about 30,000 square feet of a renovated building and an additional 30,000 square feet of brand-new. So, again, we thank our community for providing the facilities that our students and staff are in, and we really appreciate that. If you're a McGuffey student, would you please raise your hand? If you're a McGuffey student. And I would like our community to give these kids a round of applause. Now, these fine citizens of McGuffey, about three years ago, took off and went down the street into an old building there that, was it hot in the fall and spring in there? Was it pretty hot? And those kind of things. But I think you're going to find out here in a few weeks when test scores are released, that student achievement at McGuffey is on the rise, and they continue to do very well, so we thank the students and the citizens here of McGuffey for what you did. Now, if you're a staff member here at McGuffey, a teacher, custodian, a cook, please raise your hand, raise them high, let's give them a round of applause. I would tell you that the work that they've done with our students has been outstanding, and going in and doing what they had to do in a makeshift building while this building was being completed, I really have a lot of respect for what they did, and I would share with you, there were no complaints. Anytime you went in there, I'm kind of like the grandfather, I can go in and be hot and sweaty for about 20 minutes and say, "Hey, see you guys, have a nice day," and then they're staying behind, so I appreciate what you did as staff members. Some others I'd like to introduce, probably just go down along the wall, members of the architects from Leggett and King Scott, or is Mark Keith here somewhere? Where's Mark Keith at? Anybody from JBA? I don't know if you're here or not, but let's give Leggett and King Scott a hand, the people who designed our buildings. How about those folks from Resource International? Resource International, where are you at? Our construction managers, are you hiding in the back somewhere? Raise your hands. There's a couple girls over here, that's who runs it over here, but where are we at back there? Let's give them a hand. We are very, very fortunate that we've had wonderful people to work with during this project, not only at McGuffey, from the whole city. Board members, current board members, if you'd walk towards your front, and I know Mr. Handelman, I saw him standing back there, any other former board members, if you would please just kind of walk up towards your front. I normally don't tell board members what to do, but please walk up to the front, I'll ask them really nice. Here they come, this way. Bob Handelman, come on up front, if you would please. Any other former board members back in the back? I tell you, this is the toughest job in the community right here, as leading a school district, and we had opportunity for a lot of enjoyment tonight because a lot of work goes into these projects, so let's give our board members a hand, thank you very much. Also, kind of unrelated to McGuffey, but I see him standing here over there, Mayor, would you please walk towards your front? I know, we've gotten tremendous cooperation from the city this year as we've done paving projects and anything that we needed done, Mayor Hall has taken care of us, so Mayor, we thank you very much. Oh, you went to this school? See, look what it did for you. Yes, there's a future mayor sitting in here somewhere, but not until you're done, right? That's right, yeah, wait a while. And then, how about our administrators here in the district? Any administrators or directors, administrators? Barb, I see you hiding back by the wall, please walk out this way a little bit. Maura, Barb, Mindy, whomever. Raise your hands high so they know who you are. You call downtown, right around there, let's give them a hand. They work very hard. Work very hard for our kids. A group that usually sneaks off, and I'm not going to let them this time, Dave Altipeter, Larry Williams, I need you up front, don't hang by the door there, let's move it, please. Dave and Larry, just come on up, come on up, I want them to see you. Want them to see you. Here they come. As they're walking up, I tell you, Larry Williams is the head of maintenance in the district, Dave Altipeter, our director of business. Come on up, we're, come on up front here, I'm going to make you come up front this time. I would tell the community, these two gentlemen have a lot to do with our buildings and our project here, and they live this 24/7. And I'm not kidding you, they make sure that everything is done the way it's supposed to be done, and they put their heart and soul into these projects. And what I like to tell people, and it's true, we're bringing these projects in under budget. So we're building buildings under budget, and a lot of it has to do with Dave and Larry, so we appreciate what you're doing so much. Let's give them a hand. And before I bring Mrs. Harmon up here, I wanted to mention one more person, but I don't see Keith here tonight. Is Keith Richards here? Keith's usually at this stuff, we invite him back every time. You know where Keith is? He's not here. But I do want to publicly thank Keith for his work in the district and providing the leadership to get this project moving, so thank you, Keith. Let's give Keith a hand, he'll hear us in Mount Vernon, wherever he's at. And then, not that she did everything, but leadership is very important, and attitude and environment are important to us in the Newark City Schools. And to maintain an attitude and environment where students achieve, Mrs. Harmon, would you please come forward here? I'm going to turn this over, let's give Mrs. Harmon a hand. Before I turn the mic over to Martha and let her say what words she wants to say, and then we'll get around the building. I truly want to thank Martha for her leadership, and there's no question that she has done an outstanding job of leading our students and staff and our McGuffey community the way it needed to be led. And I know you're the most excited person in here tonight, are you not? Yes, very excited. So again, Martha, on behalf of the school district, we appreciate your leadership.
When asked if I would speak tonight for a few minutes, I knew that Mr. Ute would have lots of things to say, so I agreed to it, knowing that it would be very short and sweet on my part. So, I know that you're here because you're excited to see the building and to meet your teachers, my friends that are here, but I would like to take just a moment and thank all of the Newark City community. What an exciting time to be a Wildcat, and we are all Newark Wildcats. And as I sat here at the board meeting tonight, and I heard each board member say how proud they are, no one tonight is any prouder than what I am to be here and to be the principal at McGuffey Elementary. I would also like to give kudos to my staff. If you would have walked in this building two weeks ago and seen the way it was, I couldn't even dream that it would look like it does tonight. And it's because they have been in here every moment that they could get in, and they've worked. I've told Mr. Ute, if I would ask them right now to fly to the moon, they would say, "I'll do it." They're an amazing staff, and I love every one of them, and I thank them for the passion that they have for children. I also would like to thank my family that did show up tonight. Last night at 2:30, my husband Larry said, "Why aren't you going to sleep?" And I have all of these ideas going on in my head, and they've put up with a lot for me to remain the principal at McGuffey and to be here. And Larry, would you raise your hand? Brandon, and my beautiful granddaughter Riley, my daughter-in-law Kristen, and my daughter Emily is back there, and they hate me for this, but truly, if you're a part of McGuffey, you know that it's about family. And my family being the example, if I didn't have the family that I had, I couldn't be here. And the same with all of our staff members, if their families weren't supportive, it would be very difficult to do our jobs. Doug Ute has set the example for all of us, that, and he'll say this, you've got to go take care of your family. And McGuffey Elementary is my family. As I was walking around tonight, you know, this, I'm not sure, but I think this is my eighth year being at McGuffey, and all of you have become a part of my extended family. I'm so excited, I've been waiting for tonight, and I've told the staff, my celebration is going to be watching the boys and girls walk down the hallways, and to see all that they're going to enjoy this year, and the learning that's going to just totally just amaze all of us. So thank you for coming, and Mr. Ute, do you have any other words?
I'm sorry, as always, I don't want to forget somebody, the people that constructed this building, is Mike Miller, where's Mike at, from Claggett? I knew he was here. Well, in any event, obviously, you know that it's a bidding procedure to bid on our buildings here, but we were able, Robertson and Claggett and a lot of local subcontractors have gotten to do a lot of our jobs here, and so we thank Claggett Construction right here in Newark for the construction of this building, so you got somebody you want to come up and cut the ribbon? What we got?
At this time, I would like for the McGuffey staff to kind of find their way up here, and if you could just stand maybe close by the table, and then there are a few boys and girls that you have been already asked to come up and help us to cut the ribbon, if you will now come up at this time. McGuffey staff, don't be shy. Steph McClintock, I see you back there.
Before we have the ribbon cutting, we have a poem that was written by one of our students. Madison Kirk is here, and she has, she will read the poem, and then we will have the cutting ceremony.
Do you want me to hold it?
I can do it. I was only able to spend one year at McGuffey before they decided to remodel it. I was upset to leave because it was such a great school, but I knew they were going to make it better. I spent three years at West Main, and although it wasn't our home school, Mrs. Harmon and all the teachers did their best to make it great. Now they have finally finished the new McGuffey, and what's even better, they added a preschool, so my little sister gets to go here too. We can't wait to start.
If you would just be patient for a couple minutes, I want the staff to get in their rooms, and we will dismiss you, and there will be lots of helpers out in the hallway. I gave the staff a map this afternoon because they don't even know where everybody is at, but we would be glad to escort anyone who's having trouble, but just take the time, walk around, make sure you check out the library, my friends, that is awesome. But enjoy, at this point, just seeing the new building. Thanks again for coming.